I want to bring to order the October 29th, 2019 regularly scheduled board meeting for the Richland II Board of Trustees. For the first order of business, if I can have a motion to go into executive session.
I move that we convene-
Push your button. Sorry, thank you.
I move that we convene the executive session for the purpose of discussing student appeals, student admission, requests into the district's adult education program, and a litigation update.
I have had a motion made by Dr. Caution Parker. Is there a second?
Second.
No, it doesn't say that on there. So if you can-
You want to add?
If you can add that in there, please.
2.5.
And a contractual matter regarding-
Operations and construction. On a 2.5?
Regarding operations and construction.
Operations and construction.
Okay, so we have the full motion by Dr. Caution Parker. Is there a second?
I second it.
Is there any discussion? And I will make sure to add that when we want to open up public session, I'll make that additional. To make sure that everybody's clear that that was discussed in executive session. There's no further discussion, we'll have the vote. Who waiting on to me? Motion passes 7-0. We'll now go into executive session. I want to reconvene the October 2019, 20, sorry, October 29th, 2019 regularly scheduled board meeting of the Richland II Board of Trustees, where we just came back from executive session. And just to be fully open and transparent, the motion for that included a discussion of operations and contractual matters. We are now moving on to the inspirational moment and pledge of allegiance. I again tonight, I'm just going to ask everybody to please take a moment of silence. Thank you very much. We'll now have the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Now move on to the approval of the agenda. If I can please have a motion.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Ms. Mackey.
I move to approve the agenda for the October 29th, 2019 regular board meeting of the Richland II School Board of Trustees.
I have a motion made by Ms. Mackey. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Holmes. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Once again, I'm not in favor of item 9.3 being on the agenda as needed for voting on executive session items. I'd like to see that taken care of, so I will not be supporting or voting in favor of the agenda tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other comments? With that, we'll have a vote on the motion. Motion passes 6 to 1. We will now move on to special recognitions. Dr. Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, members of the board, we have our chief communications officer, Ms. Libby Ruth, with us this evening to share special recognitions for the October 29th, 2019 board meeting. Ms. Ruth.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. Thank you, board, for this opportunity. We have, tonight are honoring many of our schools and centers for their hard work that got them Palmetto Gold and Silver Awards. But first, I'd like to call up Roundtop Elementary Principal Janine Tucker. Tucker, will you please come forward? Ms. Tucker is the recipient of the first 2019 We Are Leading Award. She was one of two winners announced at the recent annual Women in Educational Leadership Conference in Greensboro. Ms. Tucker won for the school level and another winner from another district won at the district level. The award was created by We Lead, which is Women in Educational Leadership. The award recognizes an accomplished female leader who has provided mentorship, guidance, and support to other leaders. Ms. Tucker was described at the award ceremony as a role model to many and was lauded for her dedication to her practice, positive outlook, and genuine compassion for fellow leaders. The organization was created to support women along their leadership journey and stand by their side when they become principals or superintendents. We always knew that you were a great leader, Ms. Tucker, and this award just backs that up. Congratulations. Now, we're going to, Mr. Man wants the entire board to come forward. We're going to do some handshaking and passing out of Palmetto Gold and Silver banners. And Dr. Davis, if you will do the duty of passing out the banners, if you don't mind. We're starting down here on this end. We have, Tony, thank you for taking care of me before. We have 14 schools and centers that have earned Palmetto Gold and Silver Awards for their performance during the 2018 and 2019 school years. The Palmetto Gold and Silver Awards were established more than 20 years ago by the Educational Accountability Act to recognize and reward schools for academic achievement and for closing the achievement gap. Some of the criteria has changed, so based on the newest report cards. For elementary schools to receive Palmetto Gold, schools must have a combination of excellence and good academic achievement and student progress. The silver schools must have a combination of excellent, good, and average academic achievement and student progress. For high schools, the award program focuses on four report card indicators: academic achievement, preparing for success, graduation rate, and college and career readiness. The standards for elementary is also the same for middle. We've divided them up because they all were, I asked them to bring at least two, no more than two guests. A lot of our principals love to come out with all of their teachers, and that was just not possible tonight, so I begged for forgiveness. So they're going to come up with their two guests as I called them up. We'll do elementary first, and then we're going to do the centers, and then we'll do middle and high. We can't get a group photo in here, of course, so we'll just get some candids. And then if y'all are guests, element principals and guests, will come outside with me and Shelley, we will put y'all on the steps and get a nice big group photo with y'all holding your flags. But we'll bring all the elementary up, stay up here until we get y'all up, we'll clap, and then we'll do the next group, next group. All right, let's begin with elementary. Bethel Hanbury, we have Principal Tracy Footman, and Assistant Principal Shannon Holland. Yep, right there. Bethel Hanbury received a Palmetto, the Palmetto, I cannot talk, Palmetto Silver Award last year and this year. If they did, if they're, if anybody else from Bethel Hanbury here, they followed my Catawba Trail Elementary, Principal Jennifer Gillespie, and Assistant Principals Tia Jones and Marion Kelly. Catawba Trail won the Palmetto Silver Award this year. Forest Lake Elementary NASA Explorer School, we have Principal Dr. Cappy Steck, and Assistant Principals Miranda Hayward and Benjamin Jackson. Forest Lake received the Gold Award this year and the Silver in 2018. Lake Carolina Elementary Upper, Principal Jeff Williams is here tonight with Assistant Principal Jennifer Watson and Teacher of the Year Lauren Rosenberg. Lake Carolina Upper received the Palmetto Gold both in 2018 and 2019. Langford Elementary, we have Principal Cassina Jackson, Assistant Principals Dr. Twanisha Gardner and Dr. William Royce. Langford won Palmetto Gold in 2018. Polo Road Elementary, Principal Dr. Cassandra Bowser, and Assistant Principals Lysenda Jennings and Kenneth Brazel. Polo Road is taking home two silver banners tonight for this, the last two years. Roundtop Elementary, Principal Janine Tucker, and she has with her two teachers Debbie Armstrong and Terry Stone. And Roundtop is also taking home two silver banners with them tonight. Next, Sandlapper Elementary, we have Principal Connie May, and Assistant Principals Teresa Burns Roberts and Nick Gilchrist. They are taking home their silver banner for 2018. And the last elementary school is Windsor Elementary, we have Principal Denise Quickle, Assistant Principals Sonia Young and Jonathan Abney. And they received the Silver Palmetto Award in 2018. Now we're going to move on. Look at y'all. This is perfect. Y'all want to have a seat, now you can. And we're going to move on to the centers. So we'll have from Center for Inquiry, Lynn Mueller, the lead teacher director could not be here tonight, she's at a fine arts event, so she asked her assistant administrator, Makia Johnson, and teacher Dr. Chris Haas, to come and accept and receive the Palmetto Silver flag for 2019. We have the Center for Knowledge with Principal Director Jessica Agee and Lead Teacher Jessica Hawley. CFK won a Palmetto Gold in 2018 and a Palmetto Silver in 2019. And along also with Jessica, Ms. Agee, is Harold Johnson for Center for Knowledge North, and again, Palmetto Gold in 2018, Palmetto Silver in 2019. And following in the lead of the elementary schools as they're saying grades, they are standing over here for us, let's give them a big round of applause. And we will finish up with recognition of Blythewood Middle and Blythewood High. From Blythewood Middle, Principal Charis Muziek, Assistant Principals Robert Rattery and Raheem El Amin. And Blythewood High, Blythewood Middle, excuse me, won Palmetto Gold in 2019. And Blythewood High School, joining Principal Matt Sherman, he brought his student body president and vice presidents Riley Mayfield and Wyatt Brett. And they are taking home the Silver Palmetto Gold flag for 2019. So those are our middle and high winners, let's give them a round of applause. And that concludes tonight's recognitions, and I'm going to step out and take some photographs with Shelley.
All right, while the room is clearing, if I can have next on our agenda, a motion on our consent agenda, please.
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Agostini.
I move to approve tonight's consent agenda for October 29th, 2019.
Motion's been made by Ms. Agostini. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Shad. Is there any discussion? With no discussion, we'll have the vote, please, on the consent agenda. Motion passes 7-0. Next, we have our public participation. First up, we have Ms. Shanay Parker. If you'll please come to the podium. And Ms. Parker, I just want to remind you, we do record these, they go on YouTube, so it's out there in the public. And you do have, you do have three minutes.
Three minutes. Okay, good evening, everybody. Good evening.
Good evening.
I've never been to one of these before, so I really don't know how this is supposed to go. But anyways, I'm here because I was alerted about some rezoning. I know you guys haven't discussed that yet tonight, but you will. But I am a resident of Forest Creek, a homeowner in Forest Creek. We've been in the neighborhood for about two years now. Husband is retired military, he was in for 23 years. He's home with the kids right now. I'm the one that works now while he's home with the kids. So otherwise, he would be here tonight with me. But I just come to stand here, I am strongly opposed against the rezoning. I have four kids, four school age kids, and we, like I said, we're a military family. He's retired now. And we came to Richland II from Shaw Air Force Base, that's where he was stationed, that's where, that was our last duty station. But we, when we were choosing places to go, we chose Richland II because of the great things that we heard about this school district. And we also promised our kids, who are aged, we have a five-year-old that's in pre-K at Catawba, we have a second grader in, at Catawba who is seven, and we also have a fifth grader who's 10, and then we have one at Summit Parkway in sixth grade, so we got our hands full. But we promised our kids, we would give them stability. And when we, when they heard, because you know, kids talk, I don't know if you guys know it, but little kids talk, and they're like, wait, we're going to another school? They're strongly opposed. So when I heard about this, this is not what we, what we promised our kids. We, we, I am strongly opposed against the rezoning of Forest Creek, because I represent Forest Creek. We want our kids to stay at Catawba. We do not want them to go to a different school. I want my kids to have the stability. I didn't have the stability growing up. I went to over 15 elementary schools. I don't want that from my kids. I promised them that we were going to stay put where we were, and that's where I want them to stay. I did not think I was going to do all this, but I just do not, I don't want my kids going to another school. My, our neighborhood is mostly retirees. We have a mostly older neighborhood, Forest Creek is, I can speak for Forest Creek. But it's mostly retired individuals. We don't have a lot of elementary school kids that go to art, that are in our neighborhood. The stats that you all posted on the website were unclear about whether or not those statistics represented, they said Jacobs Creek, but it's like you kind of lumped Forest Creek in there, but we don't really have a lot of elementary kids. It's probably not even 30. So again, I stand here, I'm strongly against rezoning. I want my kids to stay at Catawba. I do not want them going to a different elementary school. I promised them stability, and that's what I'm going to give them. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Parker. By the way, you did just fine for your first time out. Next, we have Dr. Cheryl Guy.
Good evening, Chairman Manning, members of the school board, Dr. Davis. My name is Cheryl Guy, and I am the principal of Westwood High School. And if you would permit this evening, I would like to share with you a letter that I have written to the editor of the Independent Voice of Blythewood and Fairfield County. Dear editor, I was really disappointed and hurt when I read the headline of the article about SAT scores in the Thursday, October 17th issue of The Voice. To see our school described in such a negative way made me sad for our kids and teachers who work so hard. My disappointment grew when I saw that our news of earning nationally certified demonstration magnet school status only garnered two sentences in the same issue. This national certification is the highest level of distinction awarded by the Magnet Schools of America, known as MSA, the National Association of Magnet and Theme-Based Schools. This award was based on a broad range of evidence, including student achievement, and was given by an external body who reviewed our information. Since opening in 2012, Westwood High School remains focused on educating the whole child. We believe in the Westwood Way values of integrity, empathy, respect, responsibility, and community. Our teachers provide a rigorous education that utilizes project-based learning and technology to engage students in real-world work experiences. Our students are actors, athletic trainers, journalists, firefighters, webpage designers, musicians, nursing assistants, computer programmers, and much more. The achievements of our students and staff are being recognized on a local, state, and national scale. These are just some of our recent accolades. We received the National Math and Science Initiative grant designed to increase the number of students successfully completing advanced placement courses this year. We earned the Advanced Ed STEM certification, which is a mark of STEM distinction and excellence only offered to highly effective institutions that prioritize science, technology, engineering, and mathematics as a path to success. That was in 2017. We have received the High School League Award for sportsmanship, ethics, and integrity in 2015, 2017, 2018, and 2019. We've been recognized as an arts-integrated high school by the South Carolina Arts and Basic Curriculum Project since 2015. When you walk down our hallways and into classrooms, you will find dedicated students, teachers, and staff collaborating to achieve our common goals. The Westwood family genuinely enjoys working together, and our pride soars beyond the school grounds well into the skies. Overcoming our challenges and celebrating our successes is-
Dr. Guy.
-always will be an ongoing endeavor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, next I have Mr. Gus Philpott.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Gus Philpott. On tonight's agenda, you have board policy GBEB, staff conduct, and I'd like to just make a couple of comments about that. You left it in pretty good shape two weeks ago by striking out the words that were in parentheses. And then administration added a line that refers to board policy JICI. And I'd just like to ask you to seriously consider JICI, because it applies to students, not to staff, not to teachers, not to staff, or other employees of the district. The other thing in policy JICI is the language that students will not possess any item capable of inflicting injury or harm to persons or property. Any item. And that's pretty broad. Right now, so if this policy were to apply to personnel of the school district, to employees, all your purses tonight, I realize you're not employees, but the purses and the wallets and the pockets and the briefcases of all the employees who are here tonight contain items which are capable of inflicting injury or harm. It's not intended. These are things like car keys, combs, shoes, fingernail files, hands, feet, heads, foreheads, and these are all items capable of inflicting injury. So that, that policy probably needs to be addressed at another time. But I think that board policy GBEB is just fine, the way you left it two weeks ago, and I would encourage you to eliminate the reference to JICI tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Philpott. Next, I have Mr. Mustafa. Yes.
Board, thank you very much. I was here, I guess, a few weeks ago, and I'm back again in regards to the concern of the emergency service department guys carrying guns. As I stated before, law enforcement is the one that we have a contract with, the chef department, and I think that's the way it should remain, is that the chef department continue to be the safety for the school district as a whole. It makes no sense to me, makes no sense to the public, for you have employees carrying guns, makes no sense whatsoever. Also, I mentioned about the laser, kids being lasered, the incident that happened at the school. But it came to my attention after I left here, after I talked to some of the people in the community, that it's been a tradition, Chairman, a custom, if you will, for officers lasing children in the school district. I find that to be a serious problem. Tasing kills. If it kills adults, naturally, it can kill a child. So we want that to stop. And what bothers me and puzzles me about this is that they say that Mustafa's been a custom. It's been a long tradition in Richland II where officers tases children. Just like the officer that was at Spring Valley that dragged a young lady across the classroom. This particular officer, as they told me, it's been a custom for this officer to do this to these children. He's been doing this for the last four or five years, Mr. Mustafa, his whole time there. We have some serious issues here with accountability. No officer has a right to touch a child, and no officer has a right to tase it. So what we want the board to do is to pass policy or create policy, because you don't have nothing in place at all whatsoever. We want you guys to take this into consideration. Talk to your superintendent, put something in place. Because right now, if you're saying that you're serious about children, we're really not impressed at all whatsoever. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mustafa. And that concludes our public participation at this time. We will now move on to item 8.1, our legislative update.
Thank you. Board members, I've got a couple of items that I thought would be important for you to be aware of. You may also know about these, but one of them was, there's quite a bit of discussion at the legislature about the school start date. One, you may know about this, but just to make sure everybody was on the same page, before the end of last session, there were five bills introduced about the school start date. H 3347, House Bill 3256, and Senate Bill 240 were all given, would all give authority to all school boards to set their own start date. Blanket authority, the legislature would not have any say-so in the start date. The chances of that one getting passed, the School Board Association doesn't think that may be able to pass, but that one obviously would give all of us, all school districts, the autonomy to set their own start date. House Bill 4201 would prohibit all school, any school, from starting before August 15th. The bill that is the most, think, that most people think that may have a chance is House 3095. It would prohibit schools from starting before August 15th, but it would give you a five-day leeway either way. So in essence, your school district could start as early as August the 10th. This bill is supported and is on the legislative platform of the School Boards Association. I think that most people think that this one may have a better chance of passing, if it is to pass, if anything has passed this year. Any questions about that start date legislation?
Board members' questions, comments? All right.
The second item I wanted to mention was actually a proviso that was included in the budget bill last year. It didn't get much attention at the time and didn't get, we did not even know about it until we were notified by the Chief Financial Officer of the State Department of Education. But it was proviso 189 in the budget bill, and it was called the School Safety Program. And what it was, it was $12 million passed by the state to go to school districts- And what it was, it was $12 million passed by the state to go to school districts to fund SROs in school districts. The funds actually go to the law enforcement agency that is providing the school, the school district with the SRO. But it's $12 million. The State Department decided how those, how that $12 million was allocated, and they assigned certain number of new SROs to school districts. If a school district already had an SRO in every school district, in all their schools, they would not be given an additional SROs. Obviously, we have quite a few schools without SROs, and we received four new SRO allotments and funds to fund four new SROs. We've been working with the sheriff's department since we got this notification. We think we have an MOU agreed upon. We've submitted that to the sheriff's office. If it's approved by county council, the funds would go straight to the sheriff's office for salaries and benefits. It would cost us some operating and equipment funds, but much less per officer than we're currently paying for our 23 SROs with our current MOU with the sheriff's office. The four SROs would be assigned to Killian, Langford, Catawba, and Lineby Nelson Elementary Schools. I'll be glad to answer any questions. If you have any questions, they would start in January, the first day of school, and the second semester in January.
Board members' questions or comments for Dr. Miley? Let me start with Ms. Agostini, and then Ms. Mackey.
Thank you, Dr. Miley. As this is a proviso, is this funding for only one year?
No, we made sure, we asked. It's recurring fund. Because we were worried that in fact, oh, we get money for one year, we have four SROs, and then we don't.
Don't you come over here, though. I got it. I got it. We made sure. We got documentation from the State Department of Education under CFO that this is recurring funds.
Okay.
So these would be coming, again, we helped the sheriff's office apply for them, but the funding for the salaries and benefits, the bulk of the funding, would go to the sheriff's office directly.
All right. Thank you.
Ms. Mackey.
That was my question, and that it's a proviso, and that a proviso is only annually, but it's ongoing. So that's a special kind of proviso this time, apparently. Okay. Good deal. Thank you, Dr. Miley.
All right. Dr. Elkin Johnson.
Dr. Miley, how were these schools selected? Killian, Langford, Catawba Trail, and Lineby Nelson, do they not have an SRO presently?
They currently do not have an SRO. There are 15 elementary schools that do not have SROs currently, correct?
That's correct.
And this would have assigned four of those. We met Mr. Smith, the assistant superintendents, and Chuck Earles, head of security, met to discuss which ones were the most, that we thought would deserve, not deserve, they all deserve, but that would be the best to assign, the ones that were the furthest out and the most remote. Some of the schools are closer to other schools that have SROs, but some of these schools are a little bit further out and more remote, and there's the closest SRO is much further. So these were the ones that the district administration recommended.
Okay. I guess my question would be, I thought we had part-time SROs that will split schools, two elementary schools, one SRO. So did we move away from that?
We had SROs that share schools.
Yes.
We moved away from the sharing of SROs several years ago at elementary level. We have, of the 23 SROs we have now, five of them are at the elementary level. But we also have a list of on-call SROs for schools that do not have SROs, where SROs do report to those schools if they have a non-emergency.
And we have the security monitors at each of the schools that doesn't have an SRO.
Okay. Maybe I missed something.
There's a school monitor there, a security monitor, and they have access to call if there's a need for an SRO.
Okay. I'll just blame it on my ignorance, and maybe I missed something, but I was not aware that we had removed SROs from the elementary schools. Now, I am aware that we place some of our security guards in some of the elementary schools. So whomever can answer this question, is that the reason why we remove SROs, because we place security in the schools?
No, that's not accurate. We ended up removing SROs several years ago when we ended up having to cut with budget, with budget cuts several years ago. And that's when we also moved to the model of putting two SROs in all of our high schools during that time, too.
Okay. Is that something that came before the board? Because I wasn't sure if you said several years ago or seven, the number seven.
Several. I don't have the exact year right now, but this happened quite some time ago.
I would love to find out when, because I've been on the board for seven years, and I don't recall that coming before us. But again, maybe that's something I could have missed. So if you would, please provide that information as to when it was moved and if it was board approved. I would like to know that. Then the other question is, and I think you kind of touched on this earlier, that you chose schools based on the location?
That was one of the criteria, yes.
Okay. But also, did you guys meet with the elementary principals and have a conversation with them to see which school could have been most needed to get feedback also from all of the elementary principals?
I did not, but they, we may have discussed that with the principals. I don't know. I'm looking at the assistant principals over elementary schools and looking at Cleve.
We did not meet with all. We did meet with, as Dr. Miley said, we met with the assistant superintendents to get input on that, as well as with our security management team. And then we discussed it, and then we shared that information with those principals, those four principals that missed them.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. And also, since we talk about, you know, getting everyone involved, I think in the future, it would be great to have that conversation, have the principals at the table, because they may be able to share things like how many discipline referrals they may have had, or the type of parents that they may have that come through on a regular basis. So I think next time, I think it would be very important and respectful to have the principals involved in this type of decision making. Thank you. No more questions.
Dr. Caution Parker.
Just to shed a little light, the oldest went up here. Just to shed a little light on when we made that change with SROs, that was a big hullabaloo, which I fought a battle, and I think Ms. Janine Tucker was principal, Marie Price was here, removing SROs from the elementary school. And also, it was a budget concern, and this was right after Dr. Hefner retired in 2010. So it was either 2010 or 2011 when that decision was made to move the SROs from the elementary schools. And we placed two at the high school and made a whole change around, sort of like what I call a roundabout. But that's when that happened. I remember that, because it was a big, it was a big bone of contention. Right. It was a big bone of contention, because I
Dr. Holmes.
Yes. I'm sorry, but I'm a little surprised that we don't, we have 11 schools that don't have a SRO at the elementary level in light of the times that we're living in with the shootings that are going on. That's a big concern for me. I was not on the board when that occurred, so, but I'm on the board now. And that's a big concern for me. I'd like us to take a deeper look as to what we could potentially do to have SROs there or go back to sharing, because we're living in these times that we're living in now. I just don't think that it is prudent to have schools, elementary schools, without a SRO. And this deciding where they go because of certain things, I mean, a shooter doesn't care about certain things. So I think that we need to have some, we need to take a deeper look at that. I am deeply concerned about that, because I work in a school district currently now, and I know the importance of keeping everybody's child safe. So I'm saying out loud, I think we definitely need to look at what we can do to address that.
Thank you. Dr. Davis.
As administration, I think we would welcome the directive from the board, if that's something other boards will wish in the budget season. Adding those additional SROs will come at an additional cost to the general fund budget for the school district. I can't speak on why that change was made prior to this administration. However, I do know it was quite some time, even as serving as principal in this district, there weren't SROs back in 2012, I'm sure. We only had two SROs at the high schools and no, and the SROs at the elementary school. We made an attempt to assist by placing and reallocating our security force, and we brought to the board the approval or the plan to reallocate our security force so that we could have those SROs, I'm sorry, have security personnel at those schools that did not have an SRO at the time. Because at the time, we only had the five of the 20 elementary schools, and the other 15 didn't have any personnel. So administration has made some attempt to place those, place some individuals in the schools whose sole purpose is to monitor and secure the campus. We did have some conversations with the principals who did not have an SRO, with a few, those in particular, in the places that we considered to be the most vulnerable, but with limited resources at the time, we had to make the best decision at the best time. I would imagine that there probably would not be any principal at the elementary level that does not have an SRO, that would not advocate for having one. Thusly, each of those principals we would have interviewed or had conversations with regarding an SRO, probably all would have said yes. But in the future, administration would do its due diligence in ensuring that each person gets an opportunity to tell us yes or no in order to, in order to make sure that they have a voice at the table to secure that. But these positions or these SROs that were assigned, the four, from an administrative standpoint, we felt we would have still had to make that decision regardless of their input, on what we thought was the best locations to place those SROs. Schools like Langford that have quite a distance between schools, we felt that it was necessary to ensure that a school like that would have, have an SRO to get, so someone can get to those locations. But we'll most definitely take the recommendations of the board and put those things into action. We appreciate y'all's support on that. Thank you.
Dr. Miley, remind me the cost of one SRO the first year?
The capital costs are about $130,000 per officer, and then the operating costs are around $55,000 per officer. So 11 officers would be a little over $1.2 million capital cost, and then about a half a million, $600,000 operating cost.
And remind me, has that contract with the sheriff's department increased every year based off of their increased costs? So we've, I seem to remember that caused a rift in the board one time when you came with over $200,000 increase in that contract.
We've had, we've had several years where the increase in the sheriff's MOU was substantial.
And we spend well over $1 million a year now on our SROs. Is that correct?
About $1.2 million, yes.
$1.2 million. So we would, so we're, if we were to add the 11 SROs, we're going to push that up. Outside that first year of capital cost, we're pushing close to $2 million.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Well, no, he's saying that the, that without the four that are free, what would it be?
We still have 11. We still
Yeah. Yes. So, yeah, so we would be pushing out of our budget close to $2 million a year. Again, not advocating either direction, I just want the public to be aware of what the actual cost is for that. Dr. Elkin Johnson.
And also, I want the public to be aware that we don't have to use SROs. There are so many security services out here that there are people can carry weapons, and we can always dial 911. So just be aware of that when we're also talking about costs and funding. You don't have to go through SRO, although I love them dearly, but you can always call 911 and have security who's capable of carrying weapons as well.
All right. Dr. Miley, thank you very much. I, no, I'm sorry, we have another
Just a comment. I just wanted to bring it back to our members. I know that since I've been on the board, I know that it has been, it has been the desire of every board member, excuse me, who's been on the board, since I've been on the board, that we have resource officers in every school, that we have security in every school, high school, middle, elementary, I'm sorry, that we have, there are resource officers in every school as a safety mechanism. And Mr. Manning was bringing back to my members, I know that we had an issue with the sheriff's department because their memorandum of understanding, I know, almost doubled. You know, I think my second or first year on the board, and we had issues with that because we didn't have a choice. We needed security. So whatever we do going forward to make sure that we have security mechanisms in every school, that's great, but I do, I just wanted to reiterate that every board member that has been on the board since I have served has absolutely been concerned about school safety and wanted a securities officer in every school. And I know that every year, we have to deal with the memorandum of understanding with the sheriff's department and the rates that they give us. So whatever measures, we can, we can work on eventually, but I know that that has been the desire of every board member that has been here, to have a security person in every school and district, too.
All right. Thank you very much. All right, board, I'm going to, I need a little bit of assistance here. I have an oversight on a parent who asked to sign up, and I accidentally skipped over that person's request. If I could have a motion, since we, it is the last one, to move 15.1 up to, which is the second public participation, if I can get somebody to make that motion to go ahead and move that up to the current agenda item?
Mr. Manning.
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Mackey.
In light of the board chairs, oversight.
Thank you. It is my fault, totally. I own it.
I move that we allow the parent who did sign up to speak for our first public participation opportunity to speak at this time.
Okay. So I have a motion for that. Can I have a second? Seconded by Dr. Caution Parker. Any discussion? All right. If we can all do a hand vote, please. Thank you, board, for your graciousness. If I can now have Ms. Kate Williams come to the podium, please. And again, I do very much apologize for that oversight. Yeah.
My name is Kate Williams. I have a student at Spring Valley. I'm here today representing a group of rich and two parents who support Dr. Elkin Johnson's proposal to disallow district staff from possessing a weapon on school property. In support of this policy decision, I would like to read a statement made in February 2018 by the National Association of School Resource Officers. That's NASRO. NASRO strongly recommends that no firearms should be on a school campus except those carried by carefully selected, specially-trained SROs, who are career law enforcement officers with sworn authority deployed by police departments or agencies in collaboration with schools. There are several reasons for this recommendation. One, law enforcement officers who respond to an incident at a school could mistake for an assailant, a teacher, or any other armed person who is not in uniform. Two, anyone who hasn't received the extensive training provided to law enforcement officers will likely be mentally unprepared to take a life, especially the life of a student assailant. Three, firearm skills degrade quickly, which is why most law enforcement agencies require their officers to practice on a shooting range frequently, as often as once per month, under simulated high-stress conditions. Anyone without such frequent ongoing practice will likely have difficulty using a firearm safely and effectively. Also, ongoing firearms practice helps law enforcement officers overcome the physiological response to stress that can reduce the fine motor skills required to accurately fire a weapon. Five, anyone who possesses a firearm on campus must be able to both ready, keep it both ready for use and absolutely secure. Law enforcement officers receive training that enables them to overcome attempts to access their weapons. Six, discharging a firearm in a crowded school is extremely risky action with consequences that conclude wounding or death of innocent victims. Law enforcement officers receive training and practice in evaluating quickly the risks of firing and can hold their fire when risks to others are too high. Rather than arming school facility, faculty, or staff, NASRO recommends sufficient federal, state, and local funding be made available to place at least one carefully-selected resource officer in every school in the nation. They also recommend that larger schools have more than one. SROs provide a layer of security that cannot be achieved by persons who are not sworn officers. They build valuable, positive relationships with students, faculty, and parents that often enable the SROs to obtain information on planned violent acts before they occur. They bridge gaps between our youth, law enforcement, they mentor students, and they serve as guest lecturers. Therefore, we strongly support the current revision to the GBEB staff conduct policy, which would disallow any district staff from possessing a weapon on district property. We thank you for taking, protecting our children and district staff in supporting this change in our policy. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. And again, I do apologize, board, and Ms. Williams, for that oversight on my part. Next, we will move on to vote to Item 9.1 on our executive session items, if I can have a motion for student admission request into the district's adult education program.
Mr. Manning.
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Mackey.
With regard to Item 9.1, student admission request into the district's adult education program, there is one student to which this applies, and I move that we approve the student's request for admission into the district's adult education program.
The motions were made by Ms. Mackey. Do I have a second? Seconded by Mr. Shad. Is there any discussion? With no discussion, we'll have the vote at this time. With no discussion, we'll have the vote at this time. Motion passes seven zero. We'll now move on to item 9 dot two, student appeals. If I can please have a motion?
Mr. Manning?
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Mackey.
With regard to student number one, I move that the student be returned to the student's home school on strict probation.
Motion's been made by Ms. Mackey. Do I have a second? Seconded by Dr. Holmes. Let me make sure the motion is accurate. All right, is that accurate?
Mr. Manning?
Is there any discussion? With no discussion, we'll have the vote. Dr. Caution Parker, if you can just, um, indicate to, chair, can I get you to indicate to her while we're trying to fix your iPad with your yes or no? And motion fails, three yes, four no.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am, Dr. Elkins Johnson.
I'd like to make a motion that the student attends Blythewood Academy on strict probation.
Motion's been made by Dr. Elkins Johnson. Is there a second? Seconded by Dr. Caution Parker.
You need to write that, Blythewood Academy. You don't have to add strict probation to that.
Okay. All right. So make sure your motion's accurate when it comes up. In the meantime, is there any discussion from the board? Second was Dr. Caution Parker. All right. With no discussion, we'll have the vote at this time. Motion passes six to one. All right, if I can have a motion for student number two?
Mr. Manning?
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Mackey.
I move that student number two attend Blythewood Academy.
Motion's been made by Ms. Mackey. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Holmes. Is there any discussion? Make sure that the motion is accurate. And with no discussion, we'll have the vote at this time. Motion passes five to two. Ms. Mackey, if I can have a motion on student number three?
Uh, yes. Student number three, uh, returned to homeschool on strict probation.
Motion has been made by Ms. Mackey. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Shad. All right, we'll have the vote at this time. Motion passes six to one. Thank you very much. We will now move on to, um, item 10 dot one, an update on capital improvement. Dr. Davis?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, members of the board. We have Mr. Will Anderson to share with us the status of the Richland two bond projects for the October 29th, uh, October, uh, 2019, uh, board meeting. Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. Good evening, uh, members of the board. A brief update, uh, for this month, a little different. Uh, just wanted to show you some status of some projects and kind of give you an idea of where we're at as we move into, into the spring, more, um, construction projects. At this time, uh, not looking, we're looking at, uh, doing an update in December and not in November since it's two weeks apart and there's, will not be much to update, so we'll give you the update today. Um, on the first two slides, we just wanted to give you and the public an idea of the status on, status on a lot of our projects in terms of design percentage, construction percentage, and when those timelines are. Uh, you can see here that we, uh, have two, on the first slide, uh, two projects currently under construction, um, on the completion dates there. Uh, you can see that a lot of our projects, as you'll see on the next slide, uh, of the current ones that have been, um, uh, contract, we have contracts, work will begin in the spring. Uh, so we're excited to get those work done and wrap up the design work on, on those projects you see on the screen. Same as here, you can see we do have, uh, we have started the roofs at, um, Condor Elementary and Rice Creek with dent starting, um, within the week. Uh, so very slim, uh, very just minor starts in that construction, um, and you can see where we are on design. So it's still a lot of design work on our rebuilds, um, and some of the other renovations, some later start dates, uh, but we will see a lot of dirt moving, um, here coming in the near future. Another, uh, these next three slides I wanted to share with you is kind of a reminder of who the firms are that we have working right now, uh, the overall budget, and then the budget spent to just get you, not, give you an idea that, and the public, that we have a lot more, uh, money to spend on the subcontracting work, the sub, uh, a lot of work, uh, coming very soon when we start moving that dirt. So right now, uh, you can see those, uh, on the screen, um, we've only, you know, Center for Knowledge, we will start building in February. We've only had roughly 6% of that budget, for example. So we have a lot of, a lot more money to spend on that subcontract work to get that school built. Same with the stadium and fieldhouse at, at Richland Northeast. Um, you'll see we have spent about, uh, 42% of the money, uh, for the, for the, uh, front entrances, um, for the different contracts, um, those are different architects, so you can see where we are on those, but a lot of money still to spend, um, on those contracts in terms of the, the actual construction work. On the contracts, um, for CFK North, Blythewood High School, uh, the stadiums and those starting in the spring, uh, the contractor will be, uh, bringing us out of the bids and then we'll start assigning those bids and working with, uh, working with them to get those bids in. So we'll start bringing more, more updated numbers for you of who is getting the different, the different work in regards to the, um, uh, masonry work, plumbing work, et cetera, and start getting that information to you. With that, a reminder, our, uh, bond project webpage is up to date, um, thanks to our communications staff who do a great job of keeping that up to date. And so, um, just remind our, our constituents, voters to go and check that out, uh, to make sure they stay up to date on our bond projects. With that, I'll happy to answer any questions you may have.
Board members, questions or comments?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Shad?
Uh, Dr. Davis or Mr. Anderson, just going back to the first slide, I'm assuming it's a typo for the stadiums. The construction end date is what, January of what?
Oh, yeah, 2021. Thank you, sir.
2021?
Yes, sir. It's a year, it's a 12, it's a 11 to 12 month construction project. Good catch. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And, um, I still would like to have on the website, the, um, a tab showing the percentage of minority participation. Thank you.
All right. Other board members, questions or comments? If you heard Dr. Davis say he was working on that.
I didn't press my mic. We are working on adding that so that it's visible for, for the public. Yes, sir.
Sorry. All right, board members, other questions or comments?
I just wanted to thank you all for that. You said that you would keep us updated, Dr. Davis and your staff, and you are doing just that, good, bad, or indifferent. Thank you for providing consistent updates. I appreciate that.
Thank y'all for the support and thank the public for their support.
Yeah, I appreciate, I think that's the most, um, transparent, um, report that I've seen on our capital improvements with each project, where we are on expenditures and timelines. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, we will now move on to item 11, old business action requested, um, approval of policy revision, E, EAG, student transportation and private vehicles. Dr. Davis?
Mr. Manning, Mr. Chair, members of the board, we are bringing back before you, for your approval, um, the approvals or edits to policy, EAG, student transportation and private vehicles, and asking for your approval on this policy. If you have any questions, Mr. Anderson stands ready to address those questions for you this evening.
Board members, since this is for action, if I can have a motion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Agostini.
I move that we approve policy revision, EAG, student transportation and private vehicles.
Motion's been made by Ms. Agostini. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Holmes. Is there any discussion? With no discussion, we'll have the vote at this time. Motion passes seven zero. Dr. Davis, item 11 two.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, members of the board. We have Ms. Williams, our chief human resource officer, uh, to share with you, or to ask, ask, answer any questions regarding policy GBEB. We've sent to you the edits and updates as requested by the board in order to address this policy as recommended for the removal of any language that was, that relates to any personnel, district level, or employee, um, carrying a firearm while on school grounds, on, on district property.
Board members, if I can have a motion?
Mr. Manning?
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Mackey.
I move to approve policy GBE with, with the following revision. I know that the entire board is in, uh, support of this policy and we have been, however, the reason that I voted against it last time is because I wanted specificity. It mentions on the second page with a highlighted revision part, possessing weapons on district property. I still think that we need to be specific. If we're talking about firearms, it should say possessing firearms on district property. So my motion is that we approve policy GBE with that one revision that we strike possessing weapons on district property to possessing firearms on district property because that's what we're referencing.
Okay, motion's been made by Ms. Mackey. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Elkins Johnson. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir, Mr. Shad.
Ms. Mackey, if this, if this, um, motion passes, does this mean that there is no consequence if personnel brings something other than a firearm on property?
No, I can't speak to that. I don't know if we have addressed other, in other places in policy with regard to weapons. My concern is that since we're talking about firearms, I wanted to say firearms. Maybe, maybe Dr. Davis can provide some clarity with regard to consequences if, if they bring a knife or something like that. Is that what you're asking, Mr. Shad?
I am, and the reason I'm asking also is because, um, the policy as it currently is proposed, also parenthetically says, see policy JICI for items categorized as weapons. And then if you go to JICI, it gives the definition. And it not only includes firearms, but it includes knives, blackjacks, or other items which are generally considered to be weapons. And then it further goes to say that it references the US Code and, and typically says anything that may cause death, which could also be an explosive device. And then it cross-references the South Carolina Code, 1976 as amended, 59, section 59 dash 63 dash 370 entitled, definition of a weapon. And that is even more instructive. It says a quote weapon, end quote, as used in this section means a firearm, knife with a blade length of over two inches, dirk, razor, metal knuckles, slingshot, bludgeon, or any other deadly instrument used for the infliction of bodily harm or death. So.
You, you've made your point, Mr. Shad. I will amend my motion if the seconder will permit to pass, to approve policy GBE as stated, possessing weapons. Because you're right, the cross-reference absolutely, absolutely provides the specificity that I'm looking for. Thank you, Mr. Shad.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Will the seconder of my motion allow the amendment?
Yes, I accept.
Do you want me to restate the motion?
If you don't mind, Ms. Mackey, if you'll restate it.
I'm happy to. I move to approve policy GBE staff conduct as presented.
Okay.
And thank you, Mr. Shad.
Second.
And Mr. Shad, thank you.
All right, so we now have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? With no discussion, we'll have the vote. Motion passes seven zero.
And Mr. Shad, there's such a thing as Badger and the Witness. You had me at the first sentence. You know, you just had to get in there and just go all the way. You had me at the first sentence.
Dr. Elkins Johnson?
I just want to make clear that with this policy being approved, does that mean, Dr. Davis, that the two that are carrying weapons will cease effective today?
Uh, immediately following the last board meeting, I sent the memorandum to those two employees asking, um, ceasing their ability or denying their ability to carry a weapon on, on district property. Um, that was immediately following the last board meeting, pending the final outcome of this meeting.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you for asking, Dr. Elkins Johnson.
All right, uh, we next have item 12 dot one, a report on data snapshot. Dr. Davis?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a, a quick point of privilege, I, I do want to take this opportunity while we have a, a, a good, healthy number of members in our audience to publicly thank, uh, our school board for working through this policy with diligence. Um, the board showed, um, uh, great patience with administration as well as listening to input from members of our public in varied forms, mediums, whether it's electronically or in person, um, to give this some serious consideration as it does impact our students as well as our staff on, uh, our staff here at the district, um, and at our schools. So I am very appreciative of you all working through this policy and getting this policy passed so that we have a clear, um, expectation, uh, of, of this policy moving forward. Thank you so much for doing that and thank you for the opportunity to share. Now we have Mr. John Arnold, uh, who will share with you from the Office of Accountability and Assessment, um, the 2018, 2019 student learning, uh, data snapshot. Mr. Arnold?
Thank you. Chairman Manning, Dr. Davis, members of the board, it's again my pleasure to share with you this brief, well, this snapshot of student learning data.
We're not going to go through all the slides you got.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah. A snappy, snappy snapshot.
Snapshot just, just means a moment in time.
Yeah.
It may take a while to describe that moment. Uh, ladies and gentlemen, uh, we're going to continue as we did last year, uh, by framing this conversation or this presentation in terms of our state accountability assessment system, the South Carolina Succeeds Plan. Uh, now, board members, I know that you've seen this before. I've shared these with you, but for the public, I'd like everyone to just be aware that the South Carolina Succeeds Accountability Plan identifies two long-term goals for the state of South Carolina, uh, one being that by 2035, 90% of students will graduate high school, college, career, and citizenship ready. And then beginning with the 2020 class, we're going to increase by 5% the percent who graduate meeting those requirements. It's a tall order. Within the South Carolina Succeeds Plan, there is also a set of sub-goals. These deal specifically with academic achievement and this is how this plan holds all schools accountable, not just high schools. By 2035, 90% of students will score at level two or higher in ELA in mathematics, and by 2035, 70% will score at level three. Again, level two is the lower level, so you would expect more students to be able to reach that, that benchmark as opposed to. to Level 3. And with that said, we'll go ahead and get started looking at the results of last year's assessments. This first chart shows us the percent of students scoring Level 2, or approaches expectations, or higher, on the English Language Arts Test by grade level. And I've added a red line as an indicator of the 2035 goals. So, again, this is just Richland 2's performance last year, the percent of students scoring Level 2 or higher by grade level. And again, because we also have a goal for scoring Level 3, here's our performance by grade level of the students meeting that level of performance. It's also a helpful look across time. This chart shows the percent of students scoring Level 3 or meets expectations or higher for the three most recent years. As you can see, we have increased each of the last three years in our percent meeting those both Level 2 and Level 3. Context is always important to understanding our data, and one way that we can apply context is to compare how our schools perform with other school districts. This chart shows Richland 2 compared to eight other school districts from neighboring counties, and to the state, and the percent of students who scored at Level 3 meets expectations or higher on the South Carolina ELA assessment. For some additional context, this chart shows how Richland 2 compares to the 10 school districts that are within five percentage points above and below of Richland 2's Poverty Index. For these districts, the range of poverty indices goes from a low of 50.7% to a high of 58.3%. So, it's a fairly narrow band. And just for clarity, Richland 2 is at 54.3. And again, we are looking at the performance of the percent of students who scored at Level 3 or higher. And finally, this chart shows us how the various demographic groups in Richland 2 compared to their counterparts throughout the state. As you can see, in each of the demographic categories, Richland 2 students outperformed the state average. This is, again, the percent of students who scored Level 3 or higher, and we're looking at the various demographic categories comparing Richland 2 to the state averages. As you can see in each of those categories, the red bar, Richland 2 is taller than the blue. Moving to Mathematics, again, we are looking at the percent of students scoring Level 2, which is approaches, or higher by grade level. And the percent scoring Level 3. Again, that red line indicates the 2035 goal. We've still got a few years to get above that line. Again, looking over time, this chart shows the percent of students scoring at Level 3 or higher. And although there was a slight dip in the percent of students scoring Level 2 or higher, which would be that, that top line, the blue line, from 17 to 18, you can see that we did improve in both categories over the three-year period. Again, for context, we can see how Richland 2 compares to other districts in our geographic area. And how we compare it to districts of similar poverty indices. And then, finally, for math, we look again at our demographic groups in Richland 2 to see how they compare to their counterparts throughout the state. And once again, Richland 2 students outperformed in each of the demographic categories. Moving on to Science, you'll notice there aren't quite as many bars here. That's because, remember, in Science, only 4th grade, 6th grade, and 8th grade took the assessment last year. Just as a side note, going forward, it will only be 4th and 6th this year. Again, we are looking at the percent of students who scored at Level 2 or higher. There's no red line because there is no state goal for Science. And the percent of students scoring at Level 3. Keeping in mind our progress over time, we can see that Science has held fairly steady. Slight increase in the percent of students scoring Level 3, slight decrease in the percent of students scoring Level 2. And we can compare ourselves to our neighbors. And to districts of similar levels of poverty. One thing I failed to mention earlier, these districts are sorted by their poverty indices. So, the districts on my left are the districts that have a slightly lower level of poverty, greater average wealth, as opposed to the districts on the other side, which have, kind of have slightly higher poverty indices. On, on the left-hand side, for example, Anderson 1, Dorchester 2, Charleston, Spartanburg, those districts have a slightly lower level of poverty than we do. The districts on the other side are slightly higher in poverty.
Thank you.
But again, we're all very close. And finally, for Science, we see how we did on our demographic group comparison. And once again, in most categories, students in poverty is the only one where the state was ahead of us. And again, this is the percent of students at Level 3 or higher. Getting even smaller, now we're down to two bars, two grade levels for Social Studies. Next year, of course, there will not be Social Studies Administrator at grades 3 through 8. But we're looking here at the percent of students scoring Level 2 or higher. Remember that Social Studies is still on the old scale. There are not four performance levels for Social Studies, there's only three. So, we look at Level 2 or higher. And again, across time, a fairly flat line with just a very slight decrease. 1.5% over the last three years. Comparison by District shows us a very similar pattern. And again, by poverty. And finally, looking at the performance of our students in demographic groups. I would point out that his, the Hispanic students were at 62.5 for Richland 2, 62.6 for the state. It's very close there. And again, students in poverty is the only area where we, we were below, or the only other area by point 2. All right, moving on to the end-of-course examinations, we're just going to shift a little bit. And now, since these are not at, tested at particular grade levels, but instead by course enrollments, I've got them all on the same slide. And you can see here the percent of students scoring Level 2 or higher. The bar, again, indicated only over English, which would be the English 1 exam for this previous year, and Algebra 1, for the goal of 90% of students to hit that Level 2. And as a reminder, Level 2 is actually a D or passing. And this is our performance on the percent of students who scored at least a C or Level 3. Again, I like to be able to look over time. And although when I was first alarmed when I looked at these numbers, I then realized, actually, someone in my staff reminded me that in 2018, that was the year that the text-dependent analysis was added to the English end-of-course. So, I won't say it's an entirely different test, but it has an additional section that had not been previously included. So, it's not surprising that we would see a dip in performance for that particular year. But as you can see, performance has come back up in 2019. And I'm going to keep moving through these. Please stop me if you have any questions.
Dr. Arnold, what does, what does the red line indicate again?
Again, the red line on this one, that is the state where we need to be by 2035.
Okay, I'm sorry. All right, thank you.
That's our goal, to hit that bar by 2035.
Okay.
It's important to keep our accountability measures in front of us.
Absolutely. Yeah, it just, it just didn't indicate on there what it was. And you mentioned it, and I, there's a lot to digest.
Yes, sir, there is.
Yeah.
And looking at English 1 by our demographic groups, again, students in poverty is slightly below where the state is. And the Hispanic students are also slightly below. Looking at Algebra 1 over time, you can see that there has been a decrease in the percent of students scoring both at Level 2 and at Level 3. You can see we remain competitive with districts in our area. And with districts of similar poverty. And once again, our students, when you look at their performance, compare like students at Richland 2 compared to the state, we again perform, outperform the state in each of these categories. Biology also has shown a slight decrease from 2017 to 2019. So, again, we do remain fairly consistent with our neighbors. And with districts of similar poverty. And once again, each of our demographic categories does outperform the state averages. U.S. History and Constitution has shown, which has been our, our most difficult assessment historically, has shown continual increase for the last three years in our percent of students scoring both Level 2 and Level 3. And looking at Level 3 with districts in our neighbor, neighboring area, and districts of similar poverty. And by demographic group. Once again, students in poverty is just slightly below the state. Finally, I'd like to, because so much of our state accountability system is tied around the, the very first initial goal of 90% of students will graduate college, career, and citizenship-ready, I'd like to just look at our four-year graduation rate. You can see that in 2017, we're at 89.6. It was a slight decline into 87.2 in 2018, but then we're back up to 88.9 in 2019. Would mention that that decline in 2018 also coincides with when the state changed how we could handle or, or classify our students who left our high schools and went to the adult education programs. Previously, when a student left a high school and went to an adult education program, they were essentially no longer included for that high school. Now, the students, if they leave prior to graduation, they remain as part of that high school's cohort. If they graduate, they count for the high school, but if they don't graduate, by August of that year, they count against the high school. And in addition to graduating, of course, we want them to graduate college and career-ready. This shows a rather dramatic increase in our percent of students in the, the first set of columns there, the college or career-ready. Again, that's the goal. A student does not have to be college and career-ready. One or the other is fine. And as you can see, we were at 65% of our students who graduated in 2018, meeting one of the requirements. 2019, we're at 83.2%. State Report Card also does include the percent of students from that graduating class who met both, the college and career-ready. And then, they provide the percent of students who were college-ready and those who were career-ready. Again, remember, you can't add these numbers together to come up with the first set. It's, it's all an interplay of the numbers. And with that, I'd like to answer any questions that I can.
Board Members, Dr. Holmes first, and then Ms. Mackey.
First of all, thank you for a very informative report. I am a little disturbed. Although I see the minority student achievement is above the state average on most indicators, it is still systemically lower in every category. When you're talking about students that have 70%, 70, almost close to 80% rate, and almost across the board in every other test score, and then you look at the minority achievement, it's at the 30s. And some, I think the highest was like 37. In a district that's this size, and with the amount of percentage of minorities that we have in this district, it should be higher than that. I'm concerned, and I'm glad that we're doing things to address. I think when we first got on this Board, I talked about cultural competency being a piece for that. And I applaud you, Dr. Davis, for going ahead and adding that on to our agenda for next, for this coming school year, and I had added on the last school year. But I think that there's a deeper cause. We have got to find out what is the reason. I know that that's a systemic problem across the state. I get that. And, and across the nation, thank you, I get that. But we say we're premier, so we need to be, we need to be looking at ways to increase at 37, 36, 32 for minority achievement, when every other demographic is way higher than that signals to me that it's not a lack of, we have the resources to do what we need to do. There's a, there's a, there's a problem that we're not, we're not addressing. Again, I think cultural competency would hit that, but I think that it's got to be something else that we need to look a little bit deeper at, because that is not acceptable, even though we're above the state average. And we can applaud ourselves for that, but I don't see much of applause when you're talking about 37, 36, 32, and every, and every other demographic is at 70, and it's almost 80. So, again, I'm going to, I think, thank you, Dr. Davis, and the, and all the teachers, and everybody who work hard. I understand that. I'm an educator also, and I know that that's a national problem. But I also know that we, that's not acceptable. We have got to look at what is really the cause. Are we matching students correctly? Are we addressing students in the manner in which they learn? Are we pairing students and grouping students? Are we doing more individualized lessons? Are we doing too much computer lessons as opposed to hands-on lessons? I know some schools have gone all the way to computers, but sometimes that doesn't work for everybody. Are we addressing the modalities of learning for individual students? There's a lot of things that, besides cultural competence, that we need to look at, because that is, that is not an acceptable percentage. Again, kudos to doing better than the state and a lot of the nation. But if we're premier, that's not premier results. Thank you.
Ms. Mackey?
Couple of questions. Thank you for the deep dive. I appreciate the extrapolation of the demographics in particular, and I had concerns about. Well, let me ask you some simple questions first. With regard to end-of-the-course examinations, there is no state comparison. Is there a reason for that? Or is it, that was just the district, wasn't it? Or did I misread that slide? Was it just the district?
In the initial slide that showed just the performance, no, that was just the district.
I got you.
In some of the other breakdowns, looking at, by priority, the state is included.
Okay. Secondly, with regard to four-year graduation rate, and I'm glad, I'm glad to hear about, you know, students who are, we're not getting credit for students, per se, who graduate from adult ed. But just for clarification, is, is it still so that if a student comes here, their sophomore year, you know, they graduate on time, that we don't get credit for that four-year graduation rate? I wanted to ask for clarification with that. I know that one time, when I got on the Board, I was concerned to learn that even if a student comes in, you know, the middle of the year, they don't start on day one of their freshman year, but they still graduate four years later, that we, they don't really go get credit for them graduating in four years. Is that still the case?
We, we do, in fact, get credit for them. On the other hand, we also have to deal with students who come to us behind. It's all based on the determination of when their first year in 9th grade was, whether it was in a Richland 2 school or someplace else.
Okay. And finally, I was going to ask either you or Dr. Davis, I don't want to put you on the spot, but I had concerns with regard to the disparity with regard to, you know, Black and African-American students, the Poverty Index, and, and some, some other demographics performing lower than students who are non-minority, even though that's a very, non-minority, it's a very small population in District 2. But what you did was give us a deep dive. You gave us data, you gave us statistics, and I appreciate that. But I was going to ask either you or Dr. Davis, just like for a summative statement. When people look at these, this data, it's When people look at these, this data, it's easy to say that we need to pull, you know, we need, we need to do better in these areas. We do, we do. But I was just going to give you a chance to, I don't know, kind of summarize, you know, and say what this means and what we're working on. Either you or Dr. Davis, just like a summative statement as well, if that's, if you don't mind.
As we've talked in the past, and as we attempted to share with our, and I'll, I'll answer the question and try to be brief, share this with the, with our, our, our audience, with our parents and our community members here. As, as we transitioned this year, one of our focus is on looking at poverty. The vast majority, we are about 54% of our students in Richland School District 2 are considered PIP students, or pupils in poverty. Poverty has a direct impact on student achievement. And, and, and what we've decided and what we, I think, I hesitate, I don't want to speak for everyone because I haven't talked to them, but I believe that what we all can agree on is that ethnicity and race is not a predictor of, of achievement. Just because you're, you're born African-American does not mean you're not going to be successful academically. If you're born Asian, you're going to be successful academic. It is not a predictor of achievement. And so as educators, we have to get out of the narrative of presenting data solely on race and ethnicities. Now, does that mean that there are different ways that edu, learning can take place for students of color? For non-students, that is indeed true. And so culturally relevant teaching practices have been implemented and instituted in our district so that our teachers are sensitive and aware of the cultural differences that may exist in the classrooms. That may be in the literature that we're covering, where students are connecting better to that literature. It may be the art that we're covering, where students are connecting with that. It may be the way that we interact with students, so that we're connecting better with the students in those ways. It may be the way we look at, as we implement discipline in the classroom, to understand there are cultural differences. And so those are the steps that we're taking to reduce that. But we want to focus on poverty. When doing an analysis of our data, when you look within a certain subgroup of students, so when you look within African-American students and compare African-American students of poverty with African-American students that are not in poverty, that gap is greater within the subgroups. When you compare Asian students in poverty and Asian students that are not in poverty, that gap is greater. And you compare white students in poverty and white students that's not in poverty, that gap is also big. So the gap exists within subgroups based on socioeconomic, because poverty is a direct indicator or a direct predictor, I should say, is a predictor of students' academic success, not race, not gender. And so we like to focus on how do we address, we believe if we address the poverty, we will also close the, the gap when it comes to the ethnicity issues that we see in our schools, along with the culturally relevant teaching practices that I think the board supports wholeheartedly, that we've, that we've been attempting to do now going on two years. And we'll continue to, to do that as we add the Avid strand of culturally relevant teaching in addition to what we've done in partnership with the University of South Carolina.
Dr. Davis, thank you. That's exactly what I was looking for. And I can remember a time, and thank you for the deep dive. This is, this is, this takes some work. I can remember a time when, you know, coming to board meetings before I was on the board, when poverty was not extrapolated out in that data. So that is something that's important. I know there's a stereotype that, you know, homelessness and things like this, you know, exists, you know, in inner-city areas. It's not. We have students in our district who are homeless. We have students who come to, who come to school hungry, who are going through some serious issues that require some social services. Some of them are identified as needing social services, some of them are not. But all of those students are measured, they're tested by the same criteria that students who have an adequate support system, who are not going, who don't have ACES, you know, and adverse childhood experiences to deal with. So it's just something to think about, too. And I'm glad to know that we're trying to address all of those issues. It's a lot. When parents send schools, kids to school, they send to us the very best they have with whatever they've gone through. And poverty is a huge index, but so is, so are social issues in the home. So something to think about. But I'm glad we've got some goals and some measures in place. But thank you, Dr. Davis, for your sum, for that summative statement.
All right. Dr. Elkins-Johnson.
I think my colleagues covered two, so I checked them off, and that was the race and graduation rate. So it leaves me with one, and I want to go back to the college and career-ready piece. I know, and we all know, that not every student is going to college. However, I noticed that our career piece has increased, and then, of course, it has dropped some. And I'd like to just go back to why we initially created this building, R2I2. And it was because we wanted to incorporate some more K courses. And I know when I ran for school board back in 2012, that was one of the top priorities on my list, is to incorporate more K courses, because I know that not all students are going to attend college. So I would like to challenge Dr. Davis and his team again to build those relationships with Midland's Tech. And let's have our students increase that number for career-ready and give them a trade. And let's go back and incorporate those courses that we voted for, and at least I voted for back in 2012 or 13, to get this building. And that was to have courses like welding, auto mechanic, barbering, cosmetology, CNA programs, plumbing, and electrician. So if we really care about the welfare and the well-being of all of our students here, we will go back and we will focus also, not only on just our college students, but our career-ready students, and allow them to graduate from high school with a trade so they can leave here and go straight into the work world. So I'm going to challenge us for our next school year to build those partnerships with Midland Technical College. And let's get welding, auto mechanic, barbering, cosmetology, CNA, plumbing, and electrician in our schools to make sure that we increase that number and our students are successful when they graduate. Thank you.
Just as a point of clarification now, the career-ready piece increased by 20 percentage points. So we've gone from 60% to 20%, to 80% in, in one year. We will continue to get them, but I thought you said it decreased. And so I'm looking to, I want to make sure that it's, it's accurately reflected, that that has actually increased by 20 percentage points in one year, in addition to, I think, close to almost 18% for college or career-ready, with the goal of 2035 being 90%. So we're, we're well on our way of exceeding that 90% goal if we maintain the current path that we're on, in addition to adding additional courses. Yes, ma'am. Dr. Holmes.
I'd like to echo what my colleague said, Dr. Elkins said. When I ran also, I ran on career and tech. I'm a career and tech educator. I currently work in career and tech. And I think that one of the things that I currently said, and I think that I agree wholeheartedly, that we have to put more career and tech classes and programs in Richland District 2, which is here. We are falling so far behind Lexington, all of the Lexington's. They see the value of career and technology. They see the value of tying that in with STEM programs, because all of the jobs that are currently making money for our students and our kids are mostly all going to be technical jobs. I think that because we've come from a traditional mindset, that we want all of our children to go to four-year schools. But I myself have a four-year graduate from College of Charleston, chemistry major, have a lovely degree on the wall that we do absolutely nothing with. She turned around and went to Midland's Technical College, got her degree in nursing, and is now a pediatric nurse and a charge nurse at the Children's Hospital. But like I was saying to you all, we're sleeping, we're sleeping on career and tech. Career and tech is where the jobs are going to be at, is where the money is at. The industries are begging us to prepare students for that. We're letting the Lexington's, Lexington counties get ahead of us in things like, they have students making patents and getting paid for the engineering tech designs. Because I think we have to get away from the fact that career and tech is not just a traditional plumbing, and there's not, there's anything wrong with that, plumbing, masonry, and things of that nature. It also encompasses all of the electrician, electrical careers and coding and things of that nature. We have got to, again, I agree with Dr. Elkins, and I said it when I ran, because I am a career tech educator. We have got to get on board in this district by putting those programs back in the school, especially when we're looking at data like this, where we see on the academic side that we've got children lagging in the 30th in percentage rates. So if we say we want children to leave here successful, that does not just mean, success does not just mean going to college. Success means leaving, going to the workforce, military, and being able to support and take care of yourself. And we have got to do a better job of offering programs, not for just those who want to go to college, but for those who want to make that real money and secure real technology jobs. So we need to look at that. I agree with Dr. Elkins on that. I ran on that myself. That's an important issue. And I, I'm on the bandwagon with less, we need to get on board with that. Thank you.
Dr. Davis. Ms. Shab.
Here we are again, and as we, as I've said, I think now for my third year, this is a mixed bag. I applaud the district for showing, and you always help me, Dr. Arnold, in terms of proficiency and progress and all of that jargon. We are steadily increasing. A few areas where I'm surprised we're actually behind the state. But of course, I'm not happy with the gap between certain groups of students. And I appreciate Dr. Davis explaining it, and I totally agree that race, gender, those are not predictors of success. However, poverty absolutely is, because we're talking about opportunity. So we have opportunity gaps, we have achievement gaps, and the goal is to close them. I was going to reserve my comments for later, but I applaud us, on the very night that we get this data information, we are applauding several schools in our district who have achieved the gold standard, the Palmetto Gold Standard and the Palmetto Silver Standard, for that very reason, in closing the achievement gap. That's the focus. And we, we, we are recognizing those who were awarded for this particular year. So I'm encouraged by that. I'm also encouraged that as a board, we agreed, and I believe it was unanimous, in August of this year, to set in policy that we were for equity in education. Not, not necessarily equality, but equity in education. And for anyone that wants to see it, it's ACA. That's the policy section, ACA. And the district in turn has set a regulation. Now, before we even did that, I did want to point out that Dr. Davis has already had on his radar ways to achieve the achievement gap, to, to reduce the achievement gap. So while we still have our high-performing students, we want them to continue. We also want students that have not done very well, who, by the way, I think we typically get about 300 students or so every single year coming into our district, and we take them as they are, regardless of what kind of preparation they had, coming from a different school district, early childhood education, whatever the case may be. We take them as they are, and we're supposed to. If we could wave a magic wand, of course, that would be the best thing. But all other districts in this entire country have these same challenges, just about, I believe. So I'm seeing progress. I also am, want to stress that we are striving for premier. We are not saying that we are premier, but we're striving for that. And we are trying to do our best as a board, administration, our partners in the community, to work towards being premier. 2035 may seem like a long way, but it's really not. It's right around the corner. But I am encouraged that these numbers, we're very close to the 90% in some areas. We're close to the 70% in some areas. And, and, and we just need to continue to put in the work. One thing I wanted to point out in particular, because it's not always, I know we're talking about data. It's not always necessarily on how they perform on a test on that particular day, regardless of what happened was, was going on that night and preparation for it and that sort of night before. This is how they are on the test and how they show up on that test. But ask a teacher how that child has been doing and progressing all throughout the entire school year. And I think we had benchmark testing earlier this week, so I was praying on my girls for that. And how serious they need to take it. And, and we hope that all households have that same vigor in doing that. But we take the kids as they are for those eight hours or what have you. But they do go back home. And that's why we want our parents to, to, to work with us. I also want to applaud in terms of Avid. And I do agree, the career and technology that absolutely needs to be forced, the, the, the focus, not disregarding college, but it does appear, just from this last slide, and I don't know if it's been the focus or not, but we're at 80% that are career-ready, and we're at 42.4% that are college-ready. Now, that, that's just what the numbers are. Doesn't necessarily mean that we're putting more focus on college, because if so, then I think we're shorting things, because career is just knocking it out the park. Doesn't necessarily mean that we're focusing on career-ready, but the numbers are pretty good. But I agree, my colleagues, I mean, we're really essentially are preparing our students for jobs that hadn't even been created yet. And we're doing our best with what we have. You know, the numbers, again, are still not where I'd like for them to be, but I do see some progression. And so let's do what we can do. And the mentoring, that's also helpful. That, that is, that is helping, you know, these children. And so I'd like to see that continue to expand and do some more work in the cultural competency. We need all folks to pull, all folks. Thank you.
Dr. Arnold, I have a question for you. So because I'm statistically challenged, if I can say that. So in, in a number of the categories, when I looked at where we were on a poverty basis, statistically, generally, we were kind of median in performance compared to others that were similar. That's my non-like specific, uh, specific hat. But, but then when we look at performance per group, we exceed the state. And so help explain to me how we end up, and I know there's a statistical reason, I just can't understand how we're median in one area, but we outperform in demographics across the board. It just isn't adding up to me.
One of the differences in, in those slides, when, when we're looking, and forgive me, I'll just scroll back and, this slide, for example, we're not looking at just the students who are in poverty in this slide. We're looking at the performance of all students in the district, at each of these districts. They just happen to have similar, similar percentage of students who have been identified as, as being pupils in poverty. That's different than that final group of students. When we're looking here, we are in fact looking at just the percent of students who have been identified as in poverty within the district and within the state.
Okay. I think I get it. So I, I may need to come back and do a little bit more, just to completely understand how all that. But you understand how, um?
Yes.
Okay. Trying to add those things up.
And that's, in, in, again, this, this particular chart, I, I did, I put, put the word poverty, because this, it's the basis of the comparisons, districts that are similar to us in overall poverty index. But again, that's, that's very, again, you're looking at the entire district. Here, we're looking just at individual subsets of students.
I got you. Okay.
Okay. And that's why that final category of students in poverty sometimes looks different.
Okay. I, I guess I was just looking at if we outperform in all subsets of students, then how do we somehow become median when we look at, just trying to add all that up, but?
Yes, and that also kind of goes back to the presentation I did last March. And if I would just remind you about your experience with a grade point average.
Right.
And how an A in one class may help you more than an A in another class, just because of the, well, same, same idea applies here.
Okay. The other thing that, just a couple of comments. One, I want to say this, since I've been on the board, and I know Dr. Caution Parker's been in the district longer, but I'm the longest-serving on the board. This is by far the most detailed report that we've gotten on data. We continue to improve in this area. I can remember a time where we had to like beg the district to give us data. There was no comparison to, any comparisons to other districts or other things. It was very hard to really know where we were. And I also remember a time when every time I got a report, we were on the decline compared to the state. And so we now are making progress, kind of getting back to where I think we were at one time, where we normally exceeded the state in most of the categories. So I've seen tremendous improvement. We still have a lot of, of work to go. But I think the transparency in reporting where we really are, across demographics, across poverty, in comparison to where we are with other districts, and the consistency of that reporting, I think is tremendous, so that we can sort of gauge where we are in the shifting sands of the state-changing, you know, our, our testing on. you know, our testing on us all the time. And I do appreciate the move towards poverty and that being consistent across all the information that we get so that we can really look at, while certainly not an absolute predictor, certainly is a high predictor of student success in the district. And so I think that's a great move as well for us to really look at the actual issue, as Mr. Shad said, and where that gap truly exists and the work that we've done. And I do think, you know, I hear the board, and I certainly appreciate the fact that we do need to have all of our students ready. I just have to remind everybody, you know, tonight, we've asked more resource officers at, you know, close to a million dollar ask. We've asked for more programs for our students in career and technology, which means more teachers and more classroom space and other things. We need to be measured at what we do, but we can't all just keep asking for increases across the board. We already have the highest millage rate of any district in the state. So we're already taxing our businesses at a disproportionate amount. We have a lot of work to do as a district and board to prioritize and understand that every time we ask for an ad, what is it that we're taking away? And not to say there's not room for us to do that, but we have some real challenges. And I just want to make sure that everybody recognizes that give and take part of that. And I think Dr. Davis has done a great job of shifting resources in the district, but it's becoming increasingly difficult to meet all of these demands and continue to just increase, increase. And we know with the legislative updates, potentially, we could lose money depending on how that works. Anyway, just a little pontification there.
I'm happy to, again, these presentations are for the public and specifically for you. I sometimes do feel awkward when I have 47 slides and have to make sure I'm wearing comfortable shoes before I come up and things like that. But I want to make sure that we have the transparency and that you're receiving the information that you want. So please feel free to let me know if I need to.
I have one more question.
I do have one more. I'm sorry, but something just hit me. So far as, when you talked about college readiness, I'm sorry, career readiness, was that based on the completer concentration number for programs? Or was that based on the test scores for work keys?
That's meeting one of the five methods of being identified as career-ready.
And what were they?
That scoring at least a, I believe it's a 31 on the ASVAB.
ASVAB, okay.
Completing, college or career completion. Where's Mary Page? So, yeah, K completer, work keys.
I can't, I can't hear you.
Come up to the mic.
Please come up to the front.
Or somebody.
K completer, silver on work keys, scoring on the AS, 31 on ASVAB. What was the other one? Work-based learning. Thank you.
Okay, because I just, the reason I wanted the clarity because I don't think the public understands what, some of the public may not understand what it means to actually be career-ready. It doesn't mean that they're ready for a necessary, a job job. It's based on those indicators, and that's different than being ready for a job. I'm just throwing that out there because I'm just putting that out there, but that's for another night.
All right. Thank you very much, Dr. Arnold. We appreciate it. Next, we're gonna move on, Dr. Davis, to item 12 dot two, safety and security.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have Mr. Anderson before us again this evening to share a report on safety and security. Mr. Anderson, if you would, please share the safety and security update as briefly as possible, but be ready and stand ready to answer any questions that our board may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. We have the safety and security update, School Board meeting. Too fast? Well, first, I just want to thank you, Board members, because safety and security is a holistic approach. It takes every single person, every single body to make our school safe and secure. You just heard a great update from Dr. Arnold, learning that there's things can happen unless they're safe and secure. So thank you first and foremost, and Dr. Davis, for the vision of always being ahead of the game and giving us the resources to provide us safe and secure facilities for our students, staff, teachers, partners, community members. You did that through the bond referendum, continue to do that every day of having that vision to have us a very safe and secure school district. So thank you to you all. Thanks to Mr. Chuck Earls and his team for all the work they do, working with our principals and everyone to make sure we have a safe environment. I could thank every single person's involved in safety. So thank everyone who does their job every day to making sure that we have a safe environment. Appreciate that. Real quickly, gonna go over some of the policies and procedures. These things that we do every day, signing procedures that we have, where every single visitor has to sign in, come in that front door. Our new identikit that we've been talking about matches up to power schools. So it's much more background check as opposed to the old lobby guard system, locked doors. We've been talking about this. Every single door's locked. Do a good job of making sure. We've seen progress with our students and faculty of doing a better job with that through our random audits. Emergency plans, we have a lot of emergency plans that are reviewed annually and updated at least annually. Every single plan, they're all specific for these different emergencies, and they're specific for each school. Mr. Earls and his team work with those schools, work with our law enforcement and other partners to make sure these plans are updated, and then we'll get in a second the drills. Just those partnerships is key. In this picture, you can see Mr. Earls, Sheriff's Department, Emergency Management from Richland County, EMS, Coroner's Office, Fire Department, all here working with us constantly, and also Lakston Rich's, Lurchland FOB's, person at the time who was over safety and security for their department. So always working together on these plans. By law, we are required to do these drills and the regulations, but we go above and beyond and have done that for many years in Richland too to make sure that our students and faculty are safe. Some of the things we do with those drills, and we started this about a year and a half ago, is asking for feedback. So our schools were doing the drills, but we want to know what happened. We want to, so the drills come in, each school, and this is a snapshot, is required to tell us these, answer these questions. Mr. Earls gets those. He then can go and help them. He can go help them improve those safety drills. And so that's something that we were just doing drills, where now we are doing them and actually making improvements to those drills. So this has been a huge positive for us to really make sure to keep our students and faculty safe. The other things we're doing is our random audits. Mr. Earls, along with others, are going around and doing these safety audits and making sure the doors are locked, making sure those policies and procedures are being done. So him and his team are doing that as much as they can. And once again, a snapshot of the things he's doing at those schools. The other things that we do is the signage. The first one on your left is about the lockout. These are posted through all our schools, our communication office and others that helped us really put these signs out so that all of our students understand, everyone in the school understands what to do. You have to, you know, training and going over it. But if we have these signs, when a real emergency does take place, they can remember what to do. See something, say something. It's a holistic approach. If you see something, say something. We, as our law enforcement, others, can't do anything unless you say something. So that's been promoted. And I would like to mention the clearback policy. We were the first in the Midlands to implement that policy. And so we have been doing that and continue to expand that to other functions, sports, other events as we move along. Professional development. So we do all this, but professional development is very important. These are just some pictures of our reunification drill this past summer. The summer before, we did the active shooter drill. This was reunification drill. So we have to do a lot of professional development. There's a lot of different professional development that we have for our administrators and teachers and for all of our staff and our students to make sure they're fully trained. We've actually, hopefully, will send some administrators to the standard response protocol training and standard unification training that will happen by the I Love You Guys Foundation next week. That's really the training that prepares them for those events. The training we do that our staff is trained to give them, but this is on the trainers from the people who put this on. Some of the training that we have conducted, this is just a snapshot of the different types of training. I mean, our security officers are fully trained on all these different things. Schools have been trained by our staff. These are training that are done by our staff to schools, but all the schools continue to get trained on these. The people's very important. Those are the policies and procedures, but we can't do it without the people. We've talked about the SROs. The SROs play a huge role in our schools. They're, not only do they work with the schools they're assigned, there's schools that do not have an SRO, for example. They have Dent Middle School, for example, SRO will go work, will go do, go help out duty at Forest Lake, where it doesn't have an SRO. Other schools I've been to that do not have SROs, they still have a presence. And so that's very important. Other local law enforcement, my son attends Forest Lake Elementary School, which is one of the only two schools that are in Forest Acres. Forest Acres almost daily is out there by that school. So we have a great partnership with the law enforcement agencies with our, in our county that help provide that safety with our schools. Our security department, which I'll talk about in a second, and of course, this holistic approach. It's not just about our law enforcement. It's the behavior in mental health services that we've implemented more mental health professionals in our schools, thanks to your support from the school, from you all, and the department, from Katina's Department, for what they've done to really make sure all those wraparound services are there so that we're identifying all the kids and all those red flags, all those different things may come up so we can provide a safe environment for everyone. This is a org chart of our security department. We have a lot of security officers, part-time officers that do a lot of work to make sure that everybody's safe. Those are the 72 officers assigned, the 19 full-time officers, school security monitors, and then those are our part-time officers. And so we are hired, you know, turnover is like everywhere. We've hired seven new security officers since October 19th. Those men and women who work in our security department, they are very valued individuals. They don't carry a weapon. They're really just there to be a presence. They're there to call and see and have eyes that have been trained in security. But they put, a lot of times, they're in the road directing traffic. And so they do a lot of different things that are important to the safety and security of our students, and I can't thank them enough and publicly thank them for the work they do. Those are some of the roles and duties that our school security monitors do. Those are the ones that our 15 elementary schools, I thanked you all a couple of years ago, we were able to put in every single elementary school. And you can ask your elementary principals, they are part of the family, and they do a really good job of having that presence at the schools. And those are the roles and duties of our security officers. This is a map of our traffic points, just to give you an idea of all the points of traffic that we manage every single day. You may have seen in the news recently about the deputy in Kershaw County who got hit by a car. And if any of you drive, I mean, every you drive through a school safety point, those men and women are out there. And I know every day, I control myself without getting mad at someone who's flying by or looking at the phone, going through these points. It is embarrassing. But our Richland County Sheriff's Deputy, other partners, I saw three of them today on Trenor Road in O'Neill Court, and so they are working with us to really help provide their safe environments. Things we've done to help make it more safe, we have put body cams on some of them to try to help really get those criminals who are driving, speeding and texting while they're on the roads. Something that's really helped, the simple thing is a cone funnel. It really calls cars to slow down on some of those roads. Some of those Bookman Road, Kelly Mill roads have really helped. We also have, as we mentioned before, a lot of technology, and thanks to the bond referendum, we're updating. There's different control points, cameras that we have. You can almost go anywhere in this district and be on camera, so just a heads up to everyone on that. Some of our students need to learn that too. And then we have our communication or district radio system. And I've mentioned this before, but for our facilities, we've been really trying now to, with our facility study, is to do CPTED principles, which is crime prevention through environmental design. So it's those five principles there and what we do to make sure our facilities are safe. I'm not gonna mention any more about facilities because I've talked about this over and over in our capital improvement updates, but those are the things we're trying to do to make sure that our schools are safe. With that, I'll answer any questions. Thank you.
Board members, questions or comments? Did a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next, we have a proposal for rezoning Jacobs Creek and Forest Creek. Dr. Davis.
We have Mr. Will Simon share the proposal to the board regarding the rezoning of Jacobs Creek and Forest Creek. Mr. Simon.
Thank you, Dr. Davis, Chairman Manning, distinguished members of the board. I am here today to present a proposed rezoning. It is, in essence, a boundary line adjustment that will affect the Jacobs Creek and Forest Creek subdivisions. So we're proposing to rezone these two particular subdivisions from Catawba Trail Elementary School to Bookman Road Elementary. We began considering this proposal after reviewing, looking at the enrollment data and trends for the last several years for both schools. Actually, looking at this chart here, Bookman Road in 2007 was operating with over 700 students. They were actually over capacity. As you can see, between the years of 2007 and 2009, there was a significant decline in enrollment. And that was the same time Bridge Creek Elementary opened up in 2008 with 444 students. So there's some correlation there. Now, over the years of 2008 and 2010, Bridge Creek Elementary increased in enrollment by approximately 150 students. And you can see the subsequent years there where it levels out. They've been fluctuating, but no significant increase or decrease. However, if you look back up at the Bookman Road chart, you'll see around about the years 2011, 12, and particularly 13, there was another significant drop in enrollment there. And if you notice, that's when we opened up Catawba Trail Elementary School with 416 students in 2011. Now, the numbers for Catawba Trail has been steadily increasing. There is a lot of growth in that area. And the numbers for Bookman Road Elementary have been declining slightly yearly, and that's a more established stagnant neighborhood. So in this map here, you can see that the Bookman Road Elementary boundary, it is the yellow boundary. And the Catawba Trail Elementary boundary is the purple boundary. And those are the locations of the schools. And here, current enrollment for Bookman Road Elementary is 417. But they have a programming capacity or school capacity of 699. So they're operating at a 59.6% facility utilization rate. And again, the growth in that area is just stagnant. There's not a lot of new development. There's not even a lot of vacant parcels that are subject to development. However, in the Catawba Trail Elementary School zone, you can see it's really totally the opposite. Catawba Trail has currently 664 students enrolled. They have a school capacity of 708. So currently today, they're operating at a 93.8% facility utilization rate. So if we do nothing, you see, in less than two years, we're gonna have a problem with overcrowding at Catawba Road Elementary. And there is a lot of growth. Our homes are being built as we speak. And I've spoken with developers personally who shared their plan of development in that area. So that area is going to continue to grow. So we think the timing is right. We have to do something. So we looked at the closest area, concentrated area of students, if you will, to make some sort of lot, some sort of boundary adjustment here. And we identified the Jacobs Creek and Forest Creek subdivisions. That is the area here. And just to get your bearing on this map, the red area there is the intersection of Two Notch Road and Bookman Road. It is where Bookman Road turns into Spears Creek Church Road. And so you can see just northeast of that intersection is where Jacobs Creek and Forest Creek subdivisions are located. So let's take a deeper look at the Jacobs Creek subdivision and why we chose this area. And not just because of the proximity to Bookman Road Elementary, but you know, there are over 700 homes between Jacobs Creek and Forest Creek subdivisions. And if you look in the map here, Jacobs Creek area are the first two red dots on the left, and the red dots on the right further up Old Two Notch Road, that small section is referred to as Forest Creek subdivision. So within this development area, there are currently 275 elementary students. 71 of those students are chorsing to other schools other than Catawba Trail Elementary at the time. And we currently have 69 military families residing in the Jacobs Creek subdivision. So what are the impacts to both schools? Because when we took an all-inclusive approach to considering this rezoning, we did analyses. We really wanted to have balance. And so we looked at our demographics, and you know, we talked about the poverty indicator. And you can see at the charts to your right, those are our pre-rezoning and post-rezoning numbers. And we have everything on there from, you know, students receiving free and reduced lunch and those who pay for lunch, ethnicity, and even facility utilization. I'll draw your attention to the I'll draw your attention to the second row for programming capacity. Notice for the pre-rezoning and post-rezoning that that number is different because both schools are slated for changes per the bond referendum. A few of the classes are going to be turned into collaboration spaces, so that changes that programming capacity number. And let me draw your attention to the final row in each chart, facility utilization, you can see pre-rezoning, Bookman Road Elementary is, as I stated earlier, at a 59.6% facility utilization rate. Post-rezoning, based off our analysis, it will take the school to an 87.3% facility utilization rate, which is a comfortable rate, it gives, still leaves some room for growth, and you can see down in the Catawba Trail Elementary facility utilization, they're currently operating at a 93.8%, as I stated earlier, and the post-rezoning is going to take the school down to a 73.3% facility utilization rate. Now, we are comfortable with that because that area is going to continue to grow, and we actually anticipate in two years that that facility utilization number will be anywhere from 83 to 85% in the Catawba Trail boundary area. So that area is going to continue to grow. So what we did is, here are some key dates, starting with what we're doing tonight, but we've done a lot of work leading up to this point, we've sent out some official notifications, we've had a focus group meeting, we've had internal meetings just to talk about our communication strategy, your transparency, and things of that sort. You can see here that on October 30th tomorrow, Mrs. Libby Ruth is going to send out another official notification. That notification will come with a link that will allow parents, sorry, will allow parents to provide feedback, almost like a survey form, if you will. Also, on November the 7th, we're going to have a community meeting, that meeting is going to serve two purposes. So that meeting is going to serve two purposes. For one, it's going to allow parents to ask additional questions, and also, it's going to be an introduction to Bookman Road Elementary School for the community. And of course, on November 12th, we're planning on bringing the proposal back to the board. Transparency, so transparency is very important in this process for us. So we put together a rezoning committee to meet internally, to devise a communication strategy, if you will. And so our communication methods to our parents will include a formal digital notification from the district, which has gone out already, email notification from schools, which will direct parents to a forum where feedback can be given, as I stated earlier. We had a great focus group meeting, we're doing our public presentation on today, and we're excited about the community meeting to be held at Bookman Road Elementary on November the 7th. And in some of the notifications that have already come out, my name and number in email is published for parents who have questions right away, and they just want to pick up the phone or send an email and get an answer, and I've already gotten some emails and calls so far. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Mr. Manning.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Shad, I apologize, and then Dr. Hudson, and then Mr. Mackey.
Thank you, Mr. Simon, for a very thorough presentation. I did want to ask Dr. Davis, for the rezoning committee, well, first, are all these district employees?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Would it be too much to ask if we could get at least a community member specifically from those two subdivisions to join the rezoning committee so that, so that, so that their voice can be, they'll be at the table, and their voice can be heard a little bit more, it'll be more focused than the community meeting that we have scheduled for November 7th?
Yes.
Dr. Hudson.
Well, that was one of my questions, so thank you, Mr. Shad.
Cheated off a paper.
I think he did, he's always looking at my paper. But second question, well, my first question, I noticed that you said we had 69 military families in the Jacob Creek, how are those families identified? How do you know that they're military families?
Sorry, they're coded in our per school database as such, and so we can easily run queries to see where our military families are, because we, we routinely track them for a number of reasons.
So what if they move, or they don't identify themselves, or they retire? So how do?
Yeah, we don't get an official notification when that happens, it's just whenever we go in and we run the numbers and do analysis, those numbers do fluctuate, some of our numbers fluctuate daily, but for the most part, we, you know, they, we have a consensus of how many families we need to serve in the community.
So you mentioned Jacob Creek, the 69 military families, how about in the other neighborhood? Because that's a military family right there, so have we got that number as well?
Yeah, and that's what Ms. Parker, and I actually spoke with Ms. Parker today, that's what she was alluding to earlier when she was talking about the statistics here, the statistics you're looking at includes Jacobs Creek and Forest Creek. I can give a breakout of how many exactly, how many are in Forest Creek and how many are in Jacobs Creek. Just so you know, initially, when Jacobs Creek was permitted, Forest Creek was part of Jacobs Creek, and because they have a separate access point, because there's wetlands that are, that's going through the property, per the 911 rules with the county and the state, you have to name that subdivision something separate because it has separate access. So we're considering it one development, but it is Jacobs Creek and Forest Creek.
Ms. Mackey.
Yeah, thank you for your presentation, I know you've worked hard to make sure that you share with people ahead of time as well, I just wanted to thank you for the link, for allowing parents an opportunity to email the link, the survey, is it, that's going to have a link for parents to respond, I guess, to you or your cohorts? I appreciate that, I've been a parent with students in the district and been on, been on the parental side of major rezoning, ma- major redraw of attendance lines, so I just wanted to tell you that I appreciate the opportunity for a community in the affected areas to be able to, to offer their feedback, and of course, you know, you've got to marry the best of all worlds, but I very much appreciate that for the people who are affected to be able to, to weigh in, and not everyone can come to a board meeting, not everyone can, can share their comments in this manner, so I want to say that I appreciate that.
Yeah, and again, we want to be as transparent as possible, and just to let you know that that rezoning committee, it was, it's all internal staff, but it was really just to talk about our internal procedures leading up to this point. There are opportunities that we're going to have, that we're going to set or put in place for the community to come and engage and talk specifics about the, the process.
Yeah, I like that, the, the charrette style with all the stakeholders present and able to engage, I like, I appreciate that as well, so thank you.
Dr. Holmes.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Shad, for saying anything about the parents being on the committee, because I did notice that it was all staff, so that's important, I know y'all want to be involved in that, because I was a parent, too, in this, in this district right here, when they rezoned many years ago, I worked on that committee with Joe McKeech and some other people who got this to be a district of choice, so I understand the importance of that. But I, I did have a question, without knowing, we're, the schools are not at capacity quite yet, correct? Is that what I saw, they're, they're not quite at capacity?
Well, they're not at capacity, Catawba's at a 93.8%.
Okay, but here's, here's my question, and I, and I don't know without looking at it, because I haven't looked at a map, I'm just putting this out there, if there, the new developments that are going up around the area, is it a possibility to take those areas and zone them into the other school that does not, that's not at capacity, and leave the current students where they are? Because if it's not running over at this point, is it a possibility to leave the ones that are there, there, and then for the future, move those ones that you know are coming into the other school that's not at capacity? I'm just throwing that out there as food for thought, so when you do your committee, but when you look at it, because if you're going to, if you're going to send buses anyway, what difference does it make if you send them a little bit further? That's just a...
I, I can speak to that, I, I know, and I know this is not going to be a very popular answer for the parents that are, that are here that want to stay in this subdivision, and I understand that as a parent in this district as well. Our decisions are based on what's best for the district and what's best for the entire community. To zone a school, a school, let's say, on the other side of Wood Creek Farms, and drive that, those students pass Catawba Trail to Bookman Road, logistically and operationally, that becomes an issue. The vast majority of the growth is in that area, we have an area that we cannot overlook that this popular, that the student enrollment at Bookman Road has been decreasing steadily for the last several years. And part of that is because it's a very desirable neighborhood and a very mature neighborhood, but there is no new residents really moving into that neighborhood as far as, and there's no parcel for development. There's possibility that enrollment at Bookman could continue to go down if we don't do some rezoning for Bookman. At 417 current students, when you take that into consideration with the staff that we have there, the administration that we have there, the operational costs that we have there, currently, right now, our centers are just as, just as many students as an elementary school. CFK, both CFKs are pretty much right at around 400 some odd students. And so the, the decision to rezon is a very tough decision. We did not include any parents in the initial planning, but usually when we are doing preliminary preparations to be able to provide information to the board on something of this matter, we do not include parents, we get input from the community, give everyone a fair voice, and give everyone in the community who has concerns an opportunity to voice those concerns via either electronically or, or in person, where we have the input sessions for the community. However, in, and I say, in the past, and that's, that's probably not a bad thing, that probably is a bad thing to say, in the past, when we looked at rezoning, we needed to bring a proposal, we've always brought a proposal to the board for the board's consideration. We're not at a point for you all to vote on this, so we do still have some work to do and still need to hear input from, from, from our community, but the inevitable decision of rezoning, and particularly addressing the Jacobs Creek, Forest Creek and Bookman, is gonna have, is gonna have to happen at some point. It is, it's inevitable that we're going to have to make that tough decision, and someone's not going to be happy. So I, I just say that, I know for the board members who've been through this process, someone's not going to be happy, and there is no, everyone walks away from this feeling great and happy, even if we built a new school and then zoned students to that school, someone's going to be unhappy because they have to leave their school.
Mr. Shad.
Thank you. If you could, okay, you already got the map up, great. It does appear that the, the white dotted area, those are those two subdivisions, correct? And before Catawba was created in 2011, those residents were going to Bookman, right? Which residents, Jacobs Creek subdivision?
Yes, and Forest Creek.
No, I don't know, that was some years ago, were they going there at the time? Okay, so Will Anderson has confirmed that several years ago, yeah, they were going to.
They were, okay, thank you. So they got moved to Catawba when it was created, and now you, we are proposing to have the same or new residents that were in that area before to go back to Bookman.
That's correct.
Well, obviously, all those students will be gone, because we're talking about elementary students. And so what ended up happening was there are students that are geographically closer to Bookman that are going across Two Notch Road to go to Catawba Trail.
That's correct.
Okay. Could you explain that if this rezoning occurs, what impact on the traffic on Bookman Road that crosses into Spears Creek Church Road? How will that, would that be helpful?
Yeah.
In terms of the traffic? Because it's, it's congested?
Yeah, a lot. Yeah, so, so we have been in communication with the South Carolina Department of Transportation, and, and we want to get our engineer, we want to get their engineers out there to do some assessments for some of those intersections. We think it will help on the premise of, right now, the majority of the cars that come out of Jacobs Creek subdivision, they're making a left onto Bookman to go to work, parents taking their kids to school, and those going to work just to get on the interstate, or even our military families going that way to get on the interstate. If we rezoned this area to Bookman Road, now that splits that traffic, and it helps with timing somewhat. Now, will there still be an issue? I don't know, we still have to assess that, because most of those cars will go up to Bookman and still come back down that same way. So there, there are going to be some issues somewhere at some point, and that's where we need DOT to give us some assistance.
All right, board members, other questions or comments?
I just have a question of clarity. I taught at Pontiac, but I thought Jacob Creek was zoned for Pontiac, am I, and I, and I see...
I thought so, too.
What Creek Farms goes to Catawba, you mentioned a home right across the street from Pontiac goes to Catawba Trail.
No, before Catawba, before Catawba Trail, before Catawba Trail was built, I'm sorry, Jacob Creek.
I thought Jacob Creek went to Pontiac.
They went to Pontiac, and they did, because I worked at, I taught at Pontiac, and I see some of my colleagues, and we're...
That home in 2014, it's how it was built.
That was before, right, that was before you, so that's why I wanted to have clarity to make sure that we were correct, because I think we gave misinformation, and Jacobs Creek went to Pontiac. I'm sorry, yes.
So it didn't start existing until 2010.
Around 2009, 2002.
So it, yeah, that didn't exist for Pontiac, this is, this is, it was basically something developed in Catawba Trail, because it was a handful of people made the first phase, that was, okay, it was like, I like, we're going to explain it, so that's what we're going to be doing. It was a, it's a very new subdivision, not, maybe 10 years old now.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Yeah, I think, Dr. Holmes, there was a lot of complicated rezoning kind of at that time, so I think that was maybe when the neighborhood was new, and it was getting zoned to Catawba and all, because I remember Jacobs Creek being brought up, so I think that's where some of that confusion came in. That was when we were doing multiple rezonings, and there was a lot going on, and to Dr. Davis' point, as being one of those board members that been, has been through this, we as board members aren't happy either when this is done, it's unhappiness all the way around, but it's a difficult process that we have to address, so thank you very much for the information. All right, we will now move on to item 13.1, agenda items for November the 12th. Dr. Davis.
Board members, you have, before you in Board Docs, the information regarding the November 12 regular scheduled board meeting, just as a reminder, there's only one board meeting for the month of November, for our public, there will be only one meeting for the month of November, and we will call that meeting to order at 5:30, where we'll go into executive session for the purpose of discussing admissions, requests into adult ads, student appeals, we'll have our inspirational moment, as we come out of executive session to public session, we'll have inspirational moment, ask for the approval of the current agenda, special recognitions, approval of the consent agenda, we'll have a school focus, Catawba Trail, Catawba Trail Elementary, we'll have public participation one, a legislative update, should there be one, we'll vote on our executive session items, we will also have old business action requested, which will be the approval of the rezoning of Jacobs Creek and Forest Creek, we'll have a new business action requested, which will be the certification of our delegates, we'll have a report from the diversity and multicultural inclusion office, as well as the first quarter financial statement, we'll review items for the upcoming agenda on December the 10th, and public participation two, should there be any board superintendent comments, executive session two, voting on executive session two items and adjournment.
Dr. Davis, if I could just, under executive session, we need to add the litigation update, we did not get to that today, so if we can have that added under executive session for the next meeting. Board members, other questions or comments regarding the agenda? All right, we'll move on now to item... All right, we'll move on now to item fourteen dot one, the approval of that agenda. If I can have a motion?
Mr. Shear?
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Mackey.
I move to approve the agenda items for the November twelfth, two thousand and nineteen board meeting.
Motion's been made by Ms. Mackey. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Shad. Is there any discussion? With no discussion, we'll have the vote. Motion passes six to one. We will now move on. Item fifteen dot one, public participation number two is not necessary, so we will now move on to board and superintendent comments. I'm going to start with Mr. Shad.
In the interest of time, I wish you all well. Y'all have a good night. Thank you.
Dr. Johnson?
Just want to say, I see some of our district media specialists sitting out there, and just want to let you guys know, we heard you. We received your emails. Dr. Davis is aware of your concerns, and we heard you. So just be patient, allow Dr. Davis to meet with you guys, and let's have a reasonable solution. Have a good night, everyone.
Thank you, Dr. Caution Parker.
Just would like to say congratulations to our award-winning schools this evening, and also thank you for the very informative, very difficult, informative presentations this evening. Thank you and have a good evening.
Thank you, Dr. Holmes.
Good night.
Ms. Mackey?
Bless you for being here. Have a good evening, everyone.
Ms. Agostini?
Once again, I want to take the opportunity to thank those that come and participate in public participation. Thank you so much. Have a great evening.
Thank you. Dr. Davis?
You all put the pressure on me to be short and brief special, and we have lengthy board meetings, but I do have something that I need to share. I'm sorry, and I know that sounds like a broken record because I say that at every board meeting. But Dr. Sheryl Guy and I, without collaborating with one another, both were led to write a editorial to the Independent Voice of Blackwood in Fairfield County. I take this time to read it now because I'm not sure whether or not it will make it into the actual paper. And so I wanted to go on public and have a public record of my comments. But the Thursday, October seventeenth issue of The Voice discussing SAT and advanced placement scores at Richland Two schools left out a very important piece of information. Richland Two does not use SAT scores or AP, AP scores as a measure to compare our schools to each other. All of our schools are excellent schools. We are a district of choice where every school is an excellent choice. There is a reason for that. The SAT is designed to gauge a student's readiness to perform college-level work. It is used by colleges and universities to compare the academic readiness of students and to take admissions, and to make admissions decisions. AP courses and tests provide the opportunity for students to take college-level work while they are still in high school and earn college credit and placement. I want to say this plainly, student achievement is greater than an SAT or an AP score. The scores of, the scores are two factors that we use to assess and address the educational experience we provide students. Our responsibility is to give our students, who deserve a premier educational experience, access, access to a high-quality, rigorous academic career. As a district, our focus is on consistently pushing the bar to give them the opportunity to find their pathway to purpose. One way we do that is by expanding the number of schools implementing the National Math and Science Initiatives College Readiness Program. This increases the number of students who are exposed to AP core classes. We started this program at Blackwood and at Ridgefield High Schools. This year, it is expanded to include Spring Valley and Westwood High Schools. The mission of NEMC is to provide consistent and rigorous STEM education offerings at the public high school, at the public high schools, educating the overwhelming majority of the Department of Defense children, to document and to validate the student learning outcomes of those offerings via the Advanced Placement Framework and Assessment, and to enhance the K through twelve STEM education pipeline necessary to supply the future scientist and engineer workforce, both uniform and civilian. Of course, I want our students to score three, which is a qualifying score of four, which is well-qualifying, or five, extremely qualified on AP test. But what's more important to us is the exposure to the academic rigor that AP courses provide. For far too long, that has been an inequitable system. And so our job is to ensure that equity is being, is in place in our school district. This is important because we know that college students who take AP courses, even if they earn a score of two, which is possibly qualified, outperform students who do not take AP courses at all. These students have higher GPAs and their college completion rate is higher. I'm almost done, Mr. Manning.
You're fine.
The article noted the differences in the SAT scores earned by Westwood and Blackwood schools, Westwood and Blackwood High School students, but did not address other impressive criteria from the state report card. Westwood made significant gains in college and career readiness measures, increasing the number of students completing college applications, as well as an increase in the percentage of students from prior-year graduating class enrolled in two- and four-year colleges or technical colleges pursuing an associate's degree, certifications, or diplomas in the fall following graduation. This data tells a story about how well students have been prepared to continue their education at the graduation. The vast majority of students in our high schools will have the opportunity to take an AP course. That speaks volume and volumes and power. That's a seed that we plant, nourish, and grow. We may not see the fruits of that labor at the end of a course or this semester, but the tree will bear fruit in the form of better-prepared students who join our community, the entire community, this entire community, the military, business, education, and all, and all farmers of this grove. We are working together to provide students what they need to be successful. Our job is to give students the resources and the opportunity to find their own pathway. Test scores are just one step in stone in helping us do a better job of achieving that goal. So in conclusion, just to share some good news, this morning, R two I two, the Student Innovation Center, earned STEM certification from Cognor, which is formerly Advanced Ed. So on this first go-around, R two I two is now a nationally STEM-certified institution right here in Richland School District Two. This certification is a mark of STEM distinction and excellence only offered to highly effective institutions that prioritize STEM education as a path to success. Forest Lake Elementary and Westwood High School earned STEM certifications back in two thousand and seventeen. And the last great piece of news, if you hadn't heard by now, the Blackwood High School Girls Golf Team won the five A state championship today. They took the title away from Lexington High School, defeating, defending state champions who have won thirteen of the last fifteen state titles. It's like beating the Patriots. So congratulations to the Lady Bengals. And with that, Mr. Manning, I, I conclude.
Thank you, Dr. Day. We gave you extra time on purpose, so you're good. I did want to make a comment. I think in the public comments, it was mentioned that we have a culture of tasing students in Richland School District Two, and I just want to make a comment on that, that I quite frankly take umbrage to that comment. First off, we as a school district have taken big strides in separating out the school district and our school resource officers and police action. We do not dictate to the police how they do their job, and they don't dictate to us how we do our job, and we have worked very hard to separate out those lines. But even within that, I promise you that we do not have a culture of tasing our students in Richland School District Two. And as a board and as a, as administration, I think if we saw that as a issue that was on the increase or a problem, that we would address that problem directly and not allow that to continue. So I'm not sure where that came from, but I wanted to address that issue because I don't want that to get out unfounded. And if I'm wrong, somebody needs to present the data to me, but I've never seen anything to represent that in our school district. So student safety is a priority regardless of whether it's police action or whether it's our staff. So with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Chair, I move to adjourn the October twenty, twenty-ninth, two thousand and nineteen Richland Two School Board meeting.
Motion's been made by Ms. Mackey. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Shad. Vote, arms in the air, unanimous. Thank you very much.